Good evening. Welcome to the August 22nd, 2023 meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. I'm going to go ahead and open the meeting, call it to order, and as usual, I'm going to open by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. So for announcements, I have two, I personally have two quick things. One is just to announce that there'll be a health and wellness fair presented by the Hatfield Senior Center, which will take place Monday, September 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Here in the town hall, you would enter through the Council on Aging entrance back in the back of the building. It's free admission, there's a free continental breakfast, blood pressure and health screenings, sign-ups for the flu clinic, there'll be healthcare professionals available, behavioral and mental health services available, and a variety of vendors, raffles, and giveaways. So that sounds like a nice, nice day. And, you know, thank you very much to the Hatfield Council on Aging for putting that together. It also looks like there's going to be hot dogs and chips provided by the Hampshire County Sheriff's Triad, which is a great program. And then one other thing, we just wanted to announce and acknowledge that there's been some restoration work going on in the West Street Cemetery of the Stones. I did see some pictures of that restoration, and that work was done personally by Joe LaValle, which is just absolutely tremendous. So Joe, thank you very much. You know, such an important thing to preserve, and it just looks a lot better, and I can only imagine the work it took because the before-and-after pictures are pretty dramatic. So really, just a heartfelt thank you to Joe and the cemetery commissioners, because I'm sure that they're behind, you know, that work as well. So just want to recognize and acknowledge and thank that. Anything else?
Yes, I attended a Department of Transportation meeting last week, and there's going to be a major bridge restoration project from here to Berniston. All these bridges are going to be targeted to, each one has different things they want to do, either do the fix 'em up, paint 'em, and that kind of stuff.
Is this where 91 bridges?
Yeah, so, and some are over 91. And the way it's going to work is anything that has a speed of over 50 miles an hour, that work might be done at night, and anything that's less than 50, that work will be done during the day. And right now, they're going to give everybody at least a two-week notice before they commence on work. And one thing they were working on was the traffic light issue. When they do one lane and they have traffic lights, in case there's emergency vehicles coming in, they want to come up with a way so that the lights would trigger to allow the emergency vehicles over. So there'll be more information down the road. The completion date is targeted for October 2025. So I'm not sure what they're going to start this year, or whether this will be a big production in the spring. So Hatfield will get some information, and the bridge, I believe, I was told, was Chestnut Street Bridge, will be the bridge in our town that, and I think the other bridge, there is other design on for some other.
Elm Street Bridge?
Yeah, so.
Well, I think we all.
Yeah, this is all part of the infrastructure, I think, money that came down and for bridge work and road work and all that. So I'm just giving the town a heads-up that down the road, we'll let you know that the Chestnut Street Bridge will have some work done, so that's it.
I thought the Elm Street Bridge was the one that's done.
Well, they, they told me at the meeting they had listed Chestnut Street, and Elm Street was like in design for something else.
Oh, I see, okay.
So we'll see if that is what they were telling me, that's all.
Okay. Well, I mean, we, we know that our bridges in Massachusetts need some work, so that's, that's welcome news. I hope it's not just, just minor stuff, I hope.
Oh, no, I think they're digging up the roadway, and they're checking at the structure and doing works on the deck, and then re-asphalting the bridge and that kind of stuff. I think right now they were in discussion on what type of materials could be used and that kind of stuff, so.
Okay.
Just want to give you a heads-up on that, that's all.
Thanks for attending that on our behalf, appreciate it. Anything? Nothing? No. I mean, our next meeting, I think, will be after school starts. So just a reminder to people that within a couple weeks, you know, there'll be kids walking to school and crossing crosswalks, and watch out for school buses and all of that, so just keep your eyes out, and good luck to all the students going back to school here in Hatfield in a couple weeks. They probably don't want that reminder. So is anyone here for public forum? You are? Would you come up to these seats so the microphone can pick you up?
So this is the first stop I was told to make in my process of trying to figure out a couple things. My name is Brant Miller, I live at 8 Cronin Hill Road. Recently, within the past few months, we've been having a lot of excess speeding on our road. Back on July 26th, we had a cat that got hit and run. We haven't found anyone that come forward in regards to that cat being hit and ran. We have a lot of animals on that street. People coming from Depot, coming from Straits, it is just a speeding fest. It's not 25 miles an hour they're going, they're going excessively over that, 40, if not higher. I've been keeping track, I live at the beginning of the road on 8, so I do get to see people coming off of Depot, coming to that road, and recently we've had Carl's red trucks, JP Morgan red trucks, Dave Wickles' orange trucks, and ServiceNet white vehicles flying down our streets, just to name some of the commercial vehicles that are going fast, not including residents as well. There's a lot of animals that we all have on that street. Ourselves alone, we have four cats, two of which go outside, and two dogs that go outside, of course supervised. There's other neighbors across the street, the Van Gils that have a bunch of animals, and the horses down the street, as well as many more folks that have dogs and cats on our street. It's very concerning to me, I also have an 11-year-old son, I keep super eyes on him all the time, but, you know, all it takes is a mistake. Again, I was told to start here in regards to this, so I'm coming to you folks to try and find out what I can do. One question I do have is, is there a way to get another one of those signs, like on Depot Road, for the speed limit, so we can at least monitor it? And something else that was also brought to my attention too was, the PD was going to put some watches over there. There had been six pullovers since I made that phone call, and that was within the first two weeks of me making that call after that cat had been hit. So I just am noticing there's a big trend, I hear it first in the morning, my, my bedroom is right by the road, I hear cars going, flying up it all the time. So I'm just trying to figure out what we can do to try and work on that.
Well, first of all, welcome, and I'm your neighbor on Straits, so we have sort of the same.
Yeah.
We experience the same thing, it's in, in the summer weather, definitely the road is a little faster, and people are traveling by, we see a lot of people, we get the big trucks that are lost too from CNS sometimes. So, I mean, I think, well, it's great that the police already started doing a little bit of, you know, traffic stops there. That sign typically moves around town, no?
It does.
There's, and there's more than one, I think, because there's one.
There are two.
There's one right now, I think, on Prospect Street.
Okay.
Or it was. So, I mean, that's, maybe we could see if the chief could get the signboard there?
There were two, but one was damaged, right Karen? Yet the one on Elm, that was on Elm.
Oh, yeah.
Street was damaged, that's right.
Okay. Well, so maybe we could see if the chief could get a signboard on that, that stretch of road for a little while, and certainly, you know, just remind residents who might travel that road and all the roads to just be mindful of the speed limits. It is a residential town, there are a lot of kids out playing and animals around, so, you know, I'm glad he's at least run some, some traffic stops out there, but maybe we could see if the signboard could be there for a little while.
That'd be wonderful, I greatly appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome, thanks. Anybody else? Okay, so we do have quite a full agenda, so let's get right into it. So our first order of posted business is a public hearing, but that was posted for 5:45, right?
Right.
So we're gonna, we'll skip around a little bit just so that we don't start that.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for July 11th, 2023.
Ed's keeping me in line. Actually, for, you know what, I just noticed there's a misspelling, the, the woman from Comcast is, it's Eileen, E.I.L.E.E.N., and her last name is Leahy, L.E.A.H.Y. Yep. So we should probably just correct that, but other than that correction, I'll second that. So motion made and second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
And I think we should pass on the executive session because that's.
Oh, because that's in litigation. So we'll just hold on those. Thank you, Ed. I did skip right over that. Topic two, which is the Route 5 Water and Sewer Project Discussion, I am 100% sure is going to take longer than four minutes. Same with probably all of Chief Flaherty's. Brendan, are you here to do the DPW report?
Yes.
Okay, do you think we can do that in a couple minutes?
Yeah, I don't have anything for that.
Okay.
Whatever it tells me to do, yes.
This is a, I have to get there, sorry. Top of four. Oh, is this the?
The DPW director has recommended to put forward this wage rate increase, he said that, advising, he's talked with each of you.
I'm fine with it. It's just in here, right? Do you guys have any, you want to have any discussion, or?
You got the, rescind a license transfer, you probably can, we can probably do that.
Well.
If you honestly want to skip around, I don't know.
Well, I mean, we were just skipping because then we, this was all we had for DPW report, the rate change, salary adjustment for Brendan.
I have issues with that.
You do have issues with that?
Yes.
So that's going to take longer, okay. Okay, we can rescind.
Firefighters Association has a request for a special one-day liquor license.
That one's, that shouldn't take very long. That shouldn't take long. I, I, any, Carrie, do you want to speak to it quickly, or, I mean, it's, we do it every year, but.
I, so I submitted the, um, sorry. For those who don't know me, I'm Carrie Flaherty from the Fire Association, and president of the association. So we're doing our annual fundraiser for the Hatfield Bonfire Music Festival, it's October We, it's at the Hatfield lines called Pavilion, like usual, so things will be kind of restricted from use from Thursday evening until Sunday, when we can get everything picked up, which is common. We set up fencing Thursday night, and everything inside of it stays secured for the couple of days, so we try to keep everything as protected as possible, and so we've applied for our one-day liquor license, which you all have been greatly appreciative of approving each year. Did Chief DeKoscheck give you his letter?
He did.
Okay, so Chief DeKoscheck issued the letter saying that he, that we will have three detail officers, including USA Security, that will be there with seven officers. Just for the general public to know, in case of that, we did have some issues last year with some complaints that were put in that they had no female security officer, so that's been changed for this year, there'll be three female security officers and three males plus a supervisor, so they'll have seven of them, three officers from Hatfield, so a lot of plenty of security. And then I have paperwork in currently through, I say Amherst Insurance, I don't know if there's a different name for them, but that's who we use.
It's Amherst Insurance.
So it's the Amherst Insurance, so that we're in the process of that being finalized. We just submitted the final parts of the paperwork today, actually, so she's working on getting us the final insurance policy, which once I have that, I'll give that to Karen so that you all can see it.
It does say you have the coverage, but that's just because you're working on it.
I just, yeah.
So we could, we could vote it pending the coverage.
Correct, so it's just we haven't gotten it in hand yet, which we did the same thing last year, that you all approved it knowing that it would come, and thankfully, we got it a couple days ahead. So I started early this year hoping to get it just off of our plate and know that we have it and not worry about it.
Yep, no, I mean, I appreciate that you guys do this, it's always a great event, I know that you know what you're doing, I don't have any problems with it at all.
The only thing that's changed this year, just so everybody's aware, Fish Tales is actually our liquor license for the bartenders and, and the bar being run, not the, the club or the Young Men's Club that people probably recall it as. So this year, Carrie, I always say her last name aren't wrong, but from Fish Tales, along with, she has 11 bartenders that are helping us out, and they're going to actually be running and facilitating our bars, and also doing all of our ordering for us. So the liquor license is under them this year, which is also in the paperwork, and Amherst Insurance is aware of that.
Okay, but you still pull the one-day license, yeah?
Yeah, we still have to pull the one-day with you, but I just wanted you to know that.
Okay.
The bartenders and the bar itself is being run differently this year than we've had.
But everything else is the same, 4 to 10, I saw the lineup, it looks like a great event.
It's a great, it should be a great event.
I can't be there.
This is an all-alcohol license, Gary?
It is an all-alcohol, it's liquor, I'm sorry, it's, yeah.
Yeah, it's all alcohol, it was last year too.
Which is wine and malt in the past.
Okay, that's why I asked. Okay. Yep. I, I don't, I mean, I, I would, I would say we would vote this just pending the insurance coming from Amherst Insurance.
Which I hope to have in a couple weeks. Before your next meeting, it should be here, before your September meeting, but.
Okay.
It could be here sooner.
Ed, do you have any questions?
No, I, it's, it's a great thing for the town, it's a great for the organization, and I, I thank you for doing it every year.
Yes.
Yeah, I have fun going there too.
What's that?
I have fun going there too.
I do, I do too, and I can't go this year, and I'm not happy. I have a very joyous hap, family occasion, but I can't be there. Okay, so we can vote it pending insurance, proof of insurance?
Yeah, and I'll have that for you.
And that way, everything can be drawn up, well, we're signing things now though, right? So, okay.
I'm not taking anything with me today, Karen can hold on to whatever you all sign, and I'll just get her the insurance, and then she can issue me my permit later, that's what we've done in the past.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we approve the Hatfield one-day liquor license for, it's a date here, October 14th, from 4 till 10, full alcohol beverage license, it says, and pending their insurance.
Second.
Motion made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thanks.
I'll take a little time, sorry.
Thanks for doing that.
Of course.
Bob, do you want to just wait and take up the bonfire thing when you're doing your stuff?
Sure.
We are now two minutes late for our poll hearing. Did you want to come up? Who's here for the poll hearing? Yeah, I thought so, and Bernie, if you both want to come up, if you're going to speak, feel free to come up to the microphone. Did you want to come up? Yeah.
Good evening, Don Vaughner for Verizon. I assume you have the maps?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This, I just went out to the site, took measurements, everything looks pretty much what you see. The only measurement missing that is not on your map is Pole 12, which is where this line is going to continue from, is 174 feet away, it's right, right at the top northwest corner of 96 Straits, already there. These two new poles are being requested to extend the service up, apparently there is a new customer on Straits. I'm guessing from what I saw on the field, it's 140 North Hatfield, they must be doing something in the empty field up there, I don't know what, but they want the poles to extend up to them, and that is the purpose of these two poles.
I, I don't have any questions, I'm obviously very familiar with this, this is on my street. No questions?
No, I read it, I get it.
Anything, Ed? Do we have to do certain things to open this? Well, the hearing was opened, right? Did I open it right? Oh, sorry, I am, I need to open the hearing by referencing the date, time, and location, and the purpose of the hearing, so it is at 5:45 p.m., it's a public hearing from, on a petition from Verizon New England Inc. and N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource, and it's for the placement of poles on Straits Road. So now we're officially opened. We took the public comments a little out of order, that's okay? Marlene?
Yeah, he's the representative for, for Verizon or.
Is anyone else here for discussion on this poll hearing? Anybody have any questions?
No.
No. Kind of surprised there aren't polls there already. I walk down there all the time, I've just never noticed that there's no polls, so. Okay, so there's no public comments, so we will close the hearing and then take any action that the board decides to take. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve petition for Verizon job number 1A6L2CC on Straits Road, Hatfield, Mass.
I think we have to read this. I think you have to read this.
Well, you got to read the whole thing?
I think so. Right? Marlene?
Yes, right, the motion that's there.
Grand Verizon New England.
All right. Then I'll make a motion to approve Straits Road to place one jointly-owned pole number T dot 14 dash E dot 14 on the west side of Straits Road at a point approximately 3,700 feet southeasterly from the center line of Depot Road, and on Straits Road to place one jointly-owned pole number T dot 13 slash E dot 13 on the west side of Straits Road at a point 3,800 feet southeasterly from the center line of Depot Road, and the reason for this is the two poles to provide service for new customer on Straits Road and to provide for distribution of intelligent and telecommunications, and a transmission of high and low voltage electric current.
Is, okay, so that's different than the motion that's on the agenda.
It is, but that's fine.
It's fine?
It's okay what he did, yep.
Because it, this one just mentions, I'll just add that it mentions permission to erect and maintain poles and their respective wires and cables to be placed thereon, together with anchors, guides, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures, as said companies may deem necessary, so just to throw that in there.
I'll second it then.
Motion made and second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, so it's on the back of this. There's two signatures needed there. Okay, so Route 5 Water and Sewer Project, discussion of project change order.
So we have not received that change order.
We have not received it.
Select Board has not received it.
So we can't discuss it if we don't have it, right? Did you want to come up and speak a little bit about just sort of what's going on?
Absolutely. And I do have copies of the change order with me that I can hand off to you right now for whatever.
Yeah, the board should see those.
Absolutely. So the first item, as you mentioned, is the change order specific to the contract for the pump station. So this was essentially sent a little over a week ago, so you may have seen it in that form. There were some questions at that time, one of the primary questions was, was the time was noted as unchanged, but the contractor had then initialed it, left it open, completely open. So subsequently, we have conferred with the contractor in terms of what the realistic schedule is for this work in conjunction with the gravity sewer on West Street, and we've added a section on that first page that speaks to the contract completion date specific to this pump station. That is the only change to this change order document from what was sent the week before last. I know there were some questions on it in terms of the content, so I can just go over what those were. That particular change order encompasses the minor revisions to some of the connecting pipe and some of the actual site work related to the revised site plan that came out of all the easement discussions and push from one of the property owners to shift as much of the prop, of the infrastructure off, you know, further south, in keeping with the most recent town meeting vote. So this is the culmination of all those changes. In addition, this, these structures, which are the concrete wet well and metering vault, were fabricated by United Concrete in the fall of '21, and the contractor at that time was anticipating proceeding with installation, that was when, you know, leading into '22, had the issues with, you know, the groundwater issues, and ended up having a separate change order to resolve those things, so that will be moving forward. But meanwhile, that manufacturer has been holding on to those structures that were made and were ready to go. There was some discussion at the beginning of this, it was over the winter, as to the, what would be better? Bring them up here, certainly plenty of room to stay, you know, put it in the staging area by the, the wells, but there, the original intent with something this large is that the contractor would have it delivered the same day that they have, that they're ready to place it in the hole, because it requires a substantial crane to offload it and place it. So there would have been additional costs to redo that offloading, unloading, and, or loading back onto a trailer from a staging area, say, and then unloading back down at the actual construction site. And at the time, the thought was, the construction was going to proceed more quickly than it has, so at the time, the storage, keeping it at the manufacturer's facility was thought to be the less expensive option at the time. So that cost is in here.
Yeah, but why? We were ready for it to go in, right? But Gila didn't come?
Uh, we weren't ready for it to go in because there were on, up until this last Springtown meeting, there were still ongoing discussions as to where exactly it was going to go.
Right, so that was in May?
So right now, this design of the pump station is at the point where you have the easements, and there can be, and everything's been worked out with everybody as far as, I know that both parties aren't happy down there, but.
Yep.
But this is the final, final one?
Yes.
And I do understand that there's been design changes because of ongoing issues and legal aspects and all that.
Yep.
But isn't it going back where it was originally designed to go?
No, it is, originally as bid, all, both structures, essentially all of the infrastructure for that station was going on the restaurant property, just north of the property line. And then the only thing that was on the Ruthier property was the force main to connect to the, where it crosses, will cross over the river. So essentially, what we ended up with was. So essentially, what we ended up with was kind of 50/50. The wet well is now on the restaurant property and the valve vault is on the Ruthier property, both straddling the line as tight as we can to minimize the impact on both property owners.
So I understand why that part of the project has been on hold, but what about the rest of it?
Rest of it, we've been having issues with the contractor getting, and them in turn, their excuse to me is that they haven't been able to line up their dewatering sub, which is really the key to that whole project. It is a specialty item. At this point, they have told me, yeah, as of yesterday, they are mobilizing this week and they will be doing the actual installation of the dewatering system for the gravity sewer starting next week. So we should all see some activity this week and much more next week.
I hope so, because we've been issued a few schedules and they failed to meet those schedules. And it's been disappointing for the board, along with the residents and the whole town. So I'm hoping they're able to now follow the last schedule that was sent.
I agree. And what I would like to offer and suggest is I'm more than willing to come out again in two weeks and actually give you updates as this project gets going again, just so there's no questions or confusion.
Has there been communication with the residents?
There was, and we'll be giving them an updated one this week, just...
Mr. Longstreet says no.
None whatsoever.
Pardon?
None whatsoever.
I think for the homes that were going to be impacted by the work on the schedule...
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to stretch out. So they're working essentially in 200-foot sections, starting from the south, essentially number 35, plus or minus. So depending on where you live...
But we're all affected, because you've got vehicles that are going way beyond the speed limit, going up that dirt road. You've got all that pile of dirty field that's back there.
I think we should notify residents along the whole project that things are starting. I mean, regardless if it's directly in front of their home, there's going to be an impact for them.
We can certainly...
And they have been patient through this. So everybody should be notified. And then certainly, as work is going to be, you know, right near them, they should be notified of that as well, with plenty of notice of that.
Yep. We can do that.
So there is a cost associated with this change order of over $61,000?
So there's a balance of 40,000 in the contingency?
Just over 40,000 in the entire project contingency.
Right. And Mike has indicated that there will be a need for additional funds. For?
Two items. I looked ahead. The way these projects are typically bid is we look at and have estimated quantities for all the specific items, say for linear feet of sewer main, number of sewer laterals, pavement quantities. And those can fluctuate up and down on any project. Looking right at this moment in time, where we're at and where I think we're going to be, all of the actual construction quantities, I think, are going to be fine. Whatever is remaining is what we should use. Where there's going to be a shortfall is two items. Police details. We're essentially at the budget right now that was in the contract. And then, and that would have typically come out of contingency, but we will quickly go through that. And then the other thing is additional engineering costs going forward for both kind of the monthly activities of construction phase services. And then typically, we've provided a field resident pretty much full-time on the project. And so you can imagine that adds up pretty quickly. So that, those two items are the specific need for funds going forward.
I mean, those are known costs when you do a project like this. So why wasn't it part of the bid?
They're known, those are all estimated based on the time of construction. So because of all these things that have happened, we are well past the original calendar time that was anticipated for this project.
So could I just add some information here? So Mike, the supplemental funding, the information summer you provided at the time the town was reaching out to Mass Works in October, built into that 1.5 million is $180,000 for police details and 200,000 for engineering.
Yes.
And so you're saying you're going to now exceed that cost?
Those estimated costs? The change order that was finally worked out for the gravity sewer portion, so the first contract, ended up being more than what was estimated at the time we had reached out to Mass Works. So on those sheets, if you now looked at the actual amount for change order one compared to what we were thinking at the time, that essentially ate into what we were allocating for police and engineering.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
How much? Do you have an idea?
I can give you more information in detail, but ballpark, like 350,000 for all that combined.
What?
Wow. Yep. So the question, then, where do we get the money?
Yeah.
And just to give you a rough breakdown, because it adds up surprisingly fast, is 200,000 of that is police details, anticipating that for at least half of the time, we're going to have three details, as they have some crews working at the pump station site and working on the gravity sewer that'll end up with a police officer at each end and one in the middle, essentially creating one lane, shifting to the opposite side of the road.
Well, now, you're going to start the gravity sewer at the northern, southern end, right?
Southern end, yes.
So that's where the pump station is?
It is, but they're not, they're on opposite sides of the street.
And then it's going to continue and you're not going to do the pump station till fall?
Correct.
So when you do it in the fall, where are the two lanes? If the gravity's already been done up?
Because they'll have separate details for each org area. They'll still end up with one officer down at the pump station and then one on either end of the gravity sewer section. And again, it's just, these are estimated quantities. It's a ballpark number. And the contractor only gets reimbursed for actual payments made for actual detail services. Hence my comment about, this is under a typical, you know, circumstances, this is exactly the kind of thing that you would reach back out to Mass Works. I don't know where things would stand, given that we've already gone back to them.
Well, we can't reach out to Mass Works unless we have a definite number. And then we have to discuss if we want to go back to Mass Works, too. I mean, that's another...
So what I can do is I will send more detail on those estimated costs direct to Marlene to circulate to the board. And I'm available, too, for any discussions that are needed.
Because right now, we got this change order, which is 60-something, so we only have 40 that's left in the contingency. So then we would have to discuss whether we wanted to move 21 from ARPA funding to make sure this change order is done or some other source of funding.
The change order is coming out of the current contingency, right?
Correct. The 40-plus that is remaining already accounts for the value of that change order.
Yeah.
So this is 62 on top of that 40?
We can't use the 40 for the, you're saying, the contingency doesn't...
No, the, my...
The 40 is the balance.
Assessment of the budget...
The 61?
Yes.
Right, right. The 40,000 is the balance after paying the 61.
Oh, okay.
So then that would theoretically be applied to whatever is the next change order.
Cost, future cost.
I guess I have a question about the engineering part of the overrun, because, I mean, it seems like some of the problems on this, shouldn't the engineers have known we were going to run into some of these problems? And then the re-engineering, I mean, I'm asking, I'm serious, and I think residents have this question, too, like...
It's a legitimate question.
We've spent a lot of extra money on engineering. So we hired engineers so that we would have all the answers for the project before we went out to bid. We clearly didn't, so then it had to be re-engineered. But at some point, where does the engineering company, CEI, bear some responsibility in having to do this extra work and not put that burden on residents? That's my question to you.
Yep. Understood. The project like this, during the design, you know, the biggest issue on the job, I would say, or two biggest issues were the soil conditions combined with the groundwater. And then the other was the pump station site issues and the contesting of the easements and the location of all the infrastructure. So on the soil conditions, we did do soil borings at intervals up the full stretch of West Street. And you only do them, you know, hundreds of feet apart. And that's standard practice. And in this situation, it did not indicate what we actually found when they started to try to excavate and then dewater it. And that does happen from time to time, because you can't, there's a limit to how much exploratory excavation or drilling that you can do to try to assess what's beneath the ground. And then sometimes you get surprised. So the contractor based their bid on the information we had provided based on the borings. And once they started to work, determined that there were changed conditions. And that's what prompted the whole, it's, you know, their claim is a change order. And I would argue it's something that we didn't miss. It was just, we did what we should have during the design, and it just happens sometimes. And then on the matter of the pump station site, I think what we experienced is just an inherent potential problem when property is taken by eminent domain. And we were at the mercy of trying to avoid, you know, somewhat at the legal counsel's direction for trying to avoid or forestall a lawsuit that was filed against the town.
As we know, the town is in litigation with one of the property owners, which has involved quite a bit of Mike's time.
Yeah, and that did, that was, it's...
I do understand that part. It's a big pill to swallow, the overruns on this project.
I understand.
And they just keep coming, and it's frustrating.
Like I say, I can understand this change order with the stuff on a pump station. I'm just a little confused on all these other additional costs that we may incur down the road, but...
And I am bringing that to your attention tonight, but not looking for any decision on that at this time. I think you legitimately need more information from me.
But I mean, in terms of even the police, is it, the project is, I mean, I understand the project is taking longer than we thought because nothing's happening, but it's also taking longer than you thought when things are happening because of the dewatering?
Yes. That is the issue. So during this time where nothing has been happening on site, there certainly haven't been police detail costs. There have been some minimal engineering costs, but it's been related to the easement stuff that we went through over the spring.
I mean, 200,000 in police detail, you estimate?
It adds up. It's...
I mean, that's like two full-time, more than two full-timers working all year.
The billing rate is roughly, from the Hatfield Police Department, is roughly $80 an hour to a contractor.
How much?
$80 an hour.
To the contractor. And the contractor gets a part of that, or how does that work?
It's a complete pass-through, so the contractor doesn't get any markup. So at that rate, you know, three officers for a full week adds up really fast. And it's similar to our field rep, who is the resident observer who's out there. Hence, I had mentioned to Marlene, sometimes there may be somebody local that can fulfill those responsibilities, somebody in-house, I don't know, but those can be significant savings.
So let me get this right in my head, because I'm not the brightest light bulb around here. So we, they charge $80 to the contractor per officer? That money's...
Per hour.
Comes back?
Per hour.
Yeah, comes $80 an hour. That money comes back to the town to pay the officer. How does that work? Now, from that $80 each hour...
So it isn't necessarily one of Hatfield's officers. It could be anywhere. Sometimes it is some of our own officers.
But the officer's not getting $80 an hour, right? He's getting less.
Detail officers...
Whatever the detailed rate is, the officer's receiving that.
It's done through a revolving fund.
Right.
So the officer would get that full amount, the $80 per hour?
If, that's what, yeah, I believe so.
But no.
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 No. So where does...
Yeah, where does all of that money go?
Where does the money, the other money go? Because it's...
I did.
I thought it was, I thought private details were paid for a revolving fund. It doesn't...
Well, it is. The contractor gets billed and the officer is paid...
Does the officer get paid?
Immediately, soon, within the next payroll period.
Payroll.
Correct.
And then the revolving fund...
Maybe waiting a little while to receive that money.
Reimburses the town?
Correct. Correct. That is correct.
So why is the rate so high?
Well, I didn't realize it was, if that is the rate, I did not realize it was that high.
And that's not what people who perform the duty are paid?
I will check on that.
No.
But that's a number that's been given to you, Mike? $80 an hour?
Well, it was 75 in '21. And I'm sure it's the same.
And I know the police chief in the past would come before the select board when he, you know, was considering raising the detail rate. It's been a while, but I had no idea it was that high.
Well, but it sounds like it's not.
It's not that high.
Because you get details.
Detail officers, yeah.
I remember it was 40-something an hour. So it's gone up considerably.
That is the basis of the big numbers here. So I will get you that information, Marlene, so that you can chase it.
Yeah, I'd like to get that information and follow this a little further.
I mean, I want to, yes, every single dollar of this needs to be, including the engineering.
Yeah.
That needs to be as tight as possible.
So right now, this change order is a 62, and we would have 40 left.
And this is in the contingency. It's coming from the current contingency after this, 61,000. There's a balance of 40,000.
Okay, so we don't have to put any money into it right now.
So the 40,000 in the contingency is still available for future. I think, Mike, you said future construction costs, maybe? The 40?
It's there.
Right. But the 350,000 that you're anticipating for police detail and... Right. But the $350,000 that you're anticipating for police detail and engineer?
Yeah, I mean, it's an order of magnitude number, it's not 50,000, you know, in terms of these future costs. In looking ahead to construction, the balance remaining on all the line items for construction, pavement, sewer, all those little details, I believe are sufficient for what's actually going to happen. So there shouldn't be any change to the bottom-line construction number.
All right. Well, so we need to, go ahead.
So why didn't we know about the storage until now? The storage fee, and is it going to be more because it's taking longer now? Are we going to have more of the storage fees?
Well, that, yeah.
I expect there'll be some minimal requests that may be able to be covered through some other line items.
And that structure goes, not down by where we have the litigation issue, it's further down the road?
No, this, these structures are where the easements are.
They are where you-
That's exactly what the issue is.
So would that amount be less than us bringing up here and having them moving them again?
Yeah.
Is that customary?
To-
To start, charge storage for something, I mean, because construction projects never go-
They are not, they didn't start the storage time, so to speak, until it was like the first of this year. So they, they've had it there since the fall of '21 for almost over a year. That they're, you know, they're saying, well, that's what we would normally have it in our yard for. It was when, it was like, okay, we can't wait any longer.
Because the intent was to install it last week, and then we ran into the soil conditions and water table.
Well, we ran into the easement issues on that particular piece.
Well, I guess we need to get this, this needs to be approved before, though.
This change order is for work that's-
Avoid any further excuses or delays, I'd say, yes.
Then, any more questions before I make a motion?
No.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there any reason why the contractor couldn't start moving some of that dirty fill that's back there? While they're doing absolutely nothing on the project?
You're talking about the pile of sand, yeah, Mike, I reached out to you about that? Because when the wind blows, there's houses, the backs of the homes, people have gazebos and decks behind their homes.
I mean, we know that dirty fill's got to be moved and sold, right?
Yeah, because that's not going in the hole, you know? Okay, I will follow up on that.
And the other thing is the water table's higher this year than it's ever been.
I know.
My sump pump is running constantly. So is this mitigation going to work?
It should. What I know is when we were, we were monitoring the groundwater levels, I want to say last, in '22, because it was drier, in the hopes that we would get some natural benefit. And it didn't, it didn't really shift.
It didn't.
It didn't. So I don't know if what you're seeing is maybe-
On three feet down?
Yeah, you're just seeing, there's so much at the surface-
Yeah.
With nowhere to go.
Yeah.
I do want to point out for everyone that this change order does come with contract completion dates. And the contract completion dates will be December 31st, 2023. For subsurface work shall be completed, including the wet well structure, dry well structure, flow metering vault, and the interconnecting piping. Additionally, the river crossing shall be completed, and that's, that's proposed to be done by December 31st, 2023. And then by June 30th, 2024, which is next June, all remaining contract work shall be completed, including startup and demonstration of successful operation ready to receive sewer flow from the new gravity sewer main being installed under the separate contract, which was Phase 1 contract. So this change order does come with completion dates, and that's probably a good thing.
How about cleanup of the whole site, the worksite, should that be on there?
It's actually part of final completion.
Okay.
That, they're cleaned up and it gone.
And that's, that's important, that cleanup part, making sure that all-
Very important.
That stuff's gone.
Well, I'll take a motion on the change order.
Well, as much as it pains me, I'll make a motion to accept the change order to contract price for $61,712.96, as stated in the change order form.
Second, motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have 6:30, right, we have Tony Rizzelli.
Tony Rizzelli, 6:30.
So we only have three minutes, I don't know that there's-
Got the bonfire stuff?
We could do the bonfire quickly. Bob, quickly, you want to do the bonfire part of your agenda?
You have the letter to permit you, following master law, for allowing the town to permit one ceremonial bonfire. It's pretty much the exact same, same letter that we've submitted every year. This is the 11th year of doing the bonfire. So there's really nothing changed, but the select board has to officially approve the one ceremonial bonfire permit per year.
Okay, straightforward.
I make a motion that we approve of the bonfire for Article 14, 30, Hatfield Firefighters Association.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Probably the easiest thing we're going to do all night. Thanks. I'm sorry you got to stick around, but Tony did want to do this right at 6:30, are you okay with that?
Thank you, Mike.
I wasn't playing.
Take care.
You what? No? I mean, do you guys want to, should we ask Tony to wait? Do you want to ask Tony to wait a couple minutes?
I'll ask him.
I don't see anybody yet. Oh, that's right.
If they're coming, yeah.
Well, then let's, let's, well, no, I'd rather, Bob wants to-
Daryl in the hallway?
Oh, yeah, Tony Rizzelli is there.
They're in the hall? Oh, I would, you want to ask them to come in? Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, the accountant is on, and Tony Rizzelli.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
We can all speak to, whose computer is this, because you don't want me to be touching anything?
It's just a monitor. It's just a monitor.
Hi, Daryl.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
So we have Tony Rizzelli and our accountant joining us remotely.
You having fun yet?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Bless.
Welcome, Finance Committee, welcome, Tony. And Richard.
I don't know, can Tony hear?
Tony, can you hear us?
No, he's not responding.
He's not responding, and Richard doesn't have a camera?
Tony's mic is on.
It is on, but he's not hearing us. Our mic isn't on. Our mic is on. All right, Tony, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, okay, good. We were having a little tech, technical difficulty at our end.
That's okay, I'm here.
Nice, nice to see you. Richard, are you going to join us with a camera, or no?
I can't figure out how to get the camera to work.
Okay. So we are joined, are you ready to go? Is everybody ready? Because we've got other, lots of other stuff to get to. We're joined by our Finance Committee as well tonight, missing just, just one, is Sean coming?
No, Sean's not coming.
Sean is, Sean is not coming. So we have four members of our Finance Committee here tonight. So I guess we can just turn it over to you, Tony. You know, we have the, the audit, the management letter.
Okay, you want me to begin?
Sure, please.
Okay, thank you, thank you for having me. And thank you, Marlene, for not making me drive four hours tonight. So it's worth a couple of technical difficulties. So, so yeah, this is the report for fiscal year '22, so it's about 13 months old. It is, it is later than normal, there was some transition, you know, your accountants transitioned over, your treasurers transitioned over, so it, it did delay the process a little bit, but here we are. And I'll give a quick presentation, and please ask questions as you go. I have printouts on my end, I didn't know if you wanted me to share a screen, or if everyone's got it in front of them?
I have it.
We have it, everybody should have printouts.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll just go through the printout of the management letter.
Okay.
If that works for everyone. All right, so in the, in the report called the management letter, if you go to page 2, we'll start there, we have some informational items. These are not findings, these are just items that the town should be aware of as it goes through its strategic process and, and annual planning. The first one is one that I have in every community. Did we have an echo?
No, we're good. I think we're good.
You're good, okay. So the first one I, first comment I have is a comment that I put in every management letter for every community that we audit, just because it's become basically a pandemic, excuse the word, but the cyber fraud is just at a very heightened pitch, and there's breaches and hacks and towns being locked out of their data or payroll issues where cyber, cyber fraud is being disguised as an employee, so they're trying to direct their pay into different bank accounts. So I just put this reminder out there, really, to just continue to be very vigilant on the cyber front. Challenge your IT provider to really look at things, to make sure you're completely up to date, just to avoid any opportunities that can present themselves for a cyber criminal. And especially where a lot of things are being done remotely now with your accounting office and whatnot. So that's my, that's my first comment under informational item. My second comment deals with just risk assessment. Oh, Richard has said he can't get his camera to work, so I just wanted to kind of read that off the screen. My, did you have a question or a comment, Richard? I saw your microphone come off.
No, I just can't figure out how to get the camera.
Secondly, just in the, in the risk assessment fraud area, which is kind of a difficult area in Hatfield, because you've got a remote accounting function. But what I like to have the accountants do is do these site visits to departments that collect cash, that handle cash, just to make sure that controls are in place, that cash is being turned over timely, that the safeguarding of cash at the department levels. Your treasurer should be involved in that process also, with some reconciliation processes in place. So I just want to put that out there also as my annual reminder to just be, just be aware that it does occur, it's out there, and you should have controls in place to help prevent it. The next comment deals with your long-term obligations. And by long-term obligations, I'm talking about OPEB and your, and your pension. So your pension liability is the liability that's incurred because you employ individuals that later will collect a pension. They earn that pension as they work, the more they work, the higher that pension is. So state law requires communities in Massachusetts to begin to fund what that liability will be when these people retire, when these employees retire. The calculation of that right now is 4.4 million. You're a member of Hampshire County Regional Retirement System, so you don't really have any control over that. They tell you what to pay into the system, and you pay it in. So there's not a lot of control on the town's end. On the OPEB side, your liability is a little higher, it's 7.8 million. The town can control OPEB, and OPEB is your health insurance liability to employees when they retire, who have worked, invested into the town's system. The town currently doesn't really have a funding process in place for OPEB, and I do encourage all my towns to begin to look at that and establish some sort of funding process, because it could be a problem years down the road when more people are retired, more people are collecting insurance. And, and for towns that are not putting money aside, it could be a budget breaker down the road. So that's my little reminders on long-term obligations, any questions on that?
What are, yes, sorry.
Sorry.
What are, how, what are other towns, what are the funding sources other towns are using that are preparing for this?
Yeah, so some towns say, let's put a certain amount away every year. Whatever they can afford, whether it's 20,000, 50,000, 100,000. Some put a half a million dollars away, a fairly significant amount, depending on how well their finances are. Hatfield doesn't quite have the luxury to go to the high end. Some towns do a percentage of free cash. So when their free cash gets certified by the Department of Revenue, they'll say, okay, we're going to put 15% or 20% of that towards OPEB. So that's another way that it is funded. And then a lot of towns, if they have extra money left over in their insurance appropriation at the end of the year, instead of turning that back into the general fund, they'll do a vote at the last meeting of the year to move that into OPEB, a portion of that. So, so there are several different ways that towns are attacking the problem. And the more money you put in, the money begins to earn interest, and it compounds. So the earlier you start the process, the better shape you're in, say, 10 or 12 years down the road. So that's kind of the overview, but a lot of towns are way behind, like you guys are. Okay, you're not in the abnormal. A lot of towns don't have the money for it and are not doing it. They're choosing to let the pension fully fund 10 or 15 years from now, then using that money to, to start to fund the OPEB. So, so there's a couple of different ways you can attack this. Does that answer your question?
Explain that one one more time, let the, sorry, let, let the pension fully- Let the, sorry, let, let the pension fully.
Yeah, so the Hampshire County, I believe, is scheduled to be fully funded in the early 2030s, probably 10 years or less. Once that's fully funded, the money that you're putting into pension right now, you no longer have to do that. So 10 or 11 years from now, whenever that happens, you can actually take that money that you are putting into pension and move it over to OPEB and begin to fund your OPEB liability. I have a feeling that the state is gonna mandate that once these pensions do become fully funded. I think they're gonna mandate something similar. Years ago, the pensions did not require to be funded. In 1990, the state said, hey, we've got a problem here, let's begin funding, forcing the funding, so they passed the laws. A lot of states around the country don't have that law, Massachusetts does. So your pension will be fully funded within the next decade. And at that time, towns are saying, let's take that money. And I forget what it is in, in Hatfield, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but whatever hundreds of thousands that is or, or close to, that goes, now begins to start to go into your OPEB fund.
Are we trying?
Does that make sense?
Yes.
It does, thank you. Are we trying to build a fund of 7.8 million dollars ultimately in 10 or 20 years? Or what, what's ultimately our goal for the amount of money we, we need to have in that fund?
Well, right now, it's 7.8 million. So that's, that's the number you need. If you were to want, wanna be 100% funded, that's what you would need right now.
That's the one.
That number changes from year to year depending on how much money you put in.
Yeah.
And how well your investments perform. And the big thing that's killing a lot of people, no, I shouldn't use the word killing because people are living longer. So the life expectancies are causing this liability to be higher than it was maybe 10 years ago. People are living well into their 80s and early 90s now. So, so that when your actuary does the valuation, they have to increase that life expectancy. Like every four or five years, I'm seeing that life expectancy move up. And I, I don't see that coming down just because of the medical advancements. Good news for us old guys, that, that wanna live a little longer, but, but not great news financially for the town.
Can I just ask one question? So if we were fully funded, would that then decrease the amount that had to be budgeted for health insurance? Because currently, we're paying it out of current funds.
Yes, that's 100% correct. If you were fully funded, the plan would pay for the health insurance. And the plan would earn interest. So the interest would start to pay and accumulate for, for your health insurance for retirees.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
And it's an important point, just something to make you folks aware of as you're doing your long-term strategy. I have an alert on investment income. Hopefully, the town is doing something in this area. But the, I mean, we all know what's happening with the economy, with inflation. Wages are flying, the cost to borrow is flying, energy costs are flying. It's making you, it's making it very difficult for you folks to manage the budget. You go out and you try to hire someone and you've got a set salary in mind, and guess what, no one's available at that salary anymore, so you have to increase it. So that, that's, that's a burden for the town. On the flip side of that is some good news, that investment income yields, which was 0% two years ago, are now 5% or higher in short-term investments. So any excess funds that you have, you can begin to now move into bank accounts or treasury notes, anything on the, that's legal in Massachusetts, and earn a little bit more interest. So, so I wanted to put it on here as an alert in case your treasurer has not begun to do this yet. They should really look into this with whoever your financial advisors are at the town. I don't know off the top of my head who, who the town is using. But, but it's definitely a, a way to yield a little bit more interest income, which would certainly help.
Thank you.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, now we can get into the findings. So for those of us who are new to the process, I always say, let's flip the switch back five years ago, seven years ago. The findings were, I think, 20 to 25 pages. When Marlene first arrived, she's like, oh my God, I'm gonna need new reading glasses when I'm done reading this because of the eye strain, there's just so much to read here. So it's, while there are some findings, it's so much better than it was. Back then, there were material weaknesses, there were significant deficiencies, there were just all kinds of things that didn't balance. Records weren't recorded correctly, all kinds of audit adjustments. Those things are.
Lost you, Tony, can't hear you.
Tony? Tony? He doesn't seem to hear us either.
Right down, can't hear. And show them.
That's, that's the good, we have some things we need to, wanna jump in at all as I'm talking, please do. I'm sure you read the management letter.
We did miss a little bit of that, I think.
Feel for the landscape at this point.
Tony, we missed a little bit of that, you went silent briefly. But I think you were just sort of explaining that this is, I think you were just explaining that this finding is much better than five to seven years ago.
Yes, can you hear me right now?
Yes, we can now.
Okay, yeah, what I was saying is, is that these findings here are manageable, okay? Seven years ago, you needed a plan. You had 30 pages and you needed a plan to really set up and fix these things. These are, this is all, these are all things that can be fixed fairly quickly. And, and I'd love to see some improvements in these areas. And I had, I had suggested if Richard wanted to jump in on any of these comments as I go through with them, just to kind of, I know he's got a feel for the landscape right now that he's been in town for a couple of months. But the first one is the cash variance. Now, the cash variance has been around, it's, it's around every year. Sometimes it's 50,000, sometimes it's 10,000, sometimes it's 20,000. It's always positive, it's not a negative cash variance, so it's extra money. But the town can't quite nail this down. So I'd love to see the treasurer, potentially with Richard's help, really focus and for this year, rather than rush to get the records to me, which is what we have done in the past, let's really focus, get this nailed down, look hard at it. And if the variance is still the same, at some point, we should say, let's make an adjustment. Let's get this variance to zero. And then let's put a process in place moving forward that mitigates any variances moving forward. So that's my, those are my comments on the cash variance. It was about $28,000 at the end of '22. And I think it was about 19,000 in the prior year. So, so like I said, if we can buckle down and clean that up, that'd be great. If we come to the same variances, it means it's something that happened long ago, which we should just adjust at this point. Would you agree to that, Richard?
Yes, yeah.
And I thought we made an adjustment to this a couple of years ago, with cash. You know, I, I can't remember exactly, but I know we've been carrying this a long time.
There was 50 grand that we, it was like a ghost account that we.
Did we put into it?
And the treasurer and accountant continued to work on that variance. See if they could, you know, locate it, and they still haven't.
And they still haven't.
They did.
At that point, the 50,000 was negative.
It has come down. Right, it was a positive number, it was a positive number, over.
It was a, yeah, okay. So I am remembering.
Yeah, it was negative. And you'd have to raise that, I don't think the town ever officially adjusted it. I, I think you kind of hit it piecemeal over the years and it got, it ended up flipping to the positive. So like I said, I just wanna, like, see a real, and the positive ones don't bother me as much, but I'd still like to see it as close to zero as possible.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just something to, to keep in mind of. And it was a little bit bigger than this when we were doing the audit. And Laurie and, and the treasurer worked together to actually bring it down. So I think, I think with a little more effort, we can probably bring it down to a manageable number. And if not, positive adjustments are good. You book it to miscellaneous income and you, you move on and you put a good process in place going forward.
No, I just, should we explain who Richard is to townspeople?
Oh, Richard, yes.
So I, I just want to backtrack a little bit. Richard, Richard Howard, who's joining us, is filling in for.
He replaced Laurie.
Replace, excuse me, replace Laurie.
Markham has hired Richard to replace Laurie.
Right, sorry. I just thought townspeople who watch this might wonder who you were.
Oh, I thought everyone knew Richard by now, so I'm sorry, I keep saying Richard, Richard, Richard.
For the most part, the departments do.
Okay, so we have just three more things to get through.
And we've had this comment for a couple of years, so hopefully we get it nailed down. We actually didn't put this comment until after the last tax recap was done, so it may be an error again. But the indirect cost of not being handled correctly between the general fund and the enterprise fund. So the general fund was kind of getting short-changed a little bit based on the way the tax recap was being, was being put together. What happened this year is it caused, the free cash went down so low this year that it caused the team to really drill down and look at this and say, hey, this is causing part of the free cash problem we have, where the free cash is coming in a lot lower than we expected. So we had explained to Laurie how to do this in the future. Richard, when it comes time to do the tax recap, it may make sense for you to have a conversation with my team to make sure that that is being done correctly before we hit the submit button, button for 20, for the 24 recap.
Okay.
Next is just a minor thing with student activities. We did a full-blown audit of student activities and that whole process is great. The school's managing it well. They, again, they had a bunch of comments when we did it the first time, three or four years ago, and they cleaned it all up. They had a couple of minor things that are well on their way to getting fixed. So I'm really happy with the deep dive we did at the student activities. And student activities are, are monies that the town and the school manage for the kids. It's not town money, but it's money for proms and, and yearbooks and pitches and field trips and all these extracurricular things. And they're not meant to supplement the budget, they're not meant to, to buy books or anything in the school, they're meant for those activities. And if there's any money left over, you kind of carry that money forward. A lot of the problems we found the first time we did it got cleaned up. So I just wanted to at least give a shout out to the school that they did a very nice job with that. The one comment that's left is the school ledger and the account, and the town's ledger are off by about 7,000, $9,000. So I wanted to see if there could be a reconciliation of that done at the end of '23 to see where that stands. But like I said, there's a variance of about $9,000, it's not a big variance, not the end of the world, but I'd like to see if that could be resolved also while we're looking at cash. All right, the next comment deals with payroll withholdings. And this is one of those that has been around forever. Basically, when you withhold money from employees for health insurance, annuities, dental insurance, life insurance, when the bill comes, a portion of the bill is paid by the town and a portion you go get from the money you withheld. Well, there's nine accounts that, some of the balances in these accounts haven't changed in several years. So it's pretty obvious that there's no activity happening with these accounts. And we just wanted to kind of, as the closing process, and I know withholdings are skipped over really quickly when the closing process comes for a town, take a closer look at those and make sure they make sense. If there's no activity in an account for three or four years, then why do we need that account? If it's a deficit, you should raise it, if it's a surplus, you close it out. And the balances should make sense as to what's gonna be owed in July. So what's owed in July should equal what the liability is or the withholding is at the end of June. So, so we go through that little test and we found that it was a little off. So again, that's just some housekeeping that I'd like to see done for the next audit. The next comment deals with tailings. Those are old checks that are more than a year old. If they're more than a year old, the Commonwealth allows you to go through a process where you advertise them. You can advertise them on your website or in a local newspaper. And if nobody claims that money, so you write a check to me for $100 and I don't cash it, and you advertise, Tony Roselli, we owe you $100, and I don't claim it, at the end of 12 months, that money belongs to the town. So we did notice as we were going through your GL that that amount has not changed, so it doesn't look like anything's been done with respect to tailings. And the treasurer should be looking at their outstanding checklist. Well, anything greater than a year old, they should be advertising that because that's extra money for the town if it's not claimed. I mean, you want to get it to the rightful party if you can, but you also don't want it sitting on an outstanding checklist for 30 years either. So, so we did, we did highlight that as another cleanup item. And most of these are not that difficult to accomplish, you usually do it while you're closing the books.
So you advertise it and then you have to wait another full year before you can?
Yeah, once you've advertised, you have 12 months. If they're not claimed in 12 months, then the town can claim those back.
And do you know what the dollar amount is roughly of the tailings?
Off the top of my head, I do not know that, that amount. You know, I can send an email out. It's not hundreds of thousands, it's, it's not a big amount, but it's something that the town should do every year.
Okay, yeah, because people could have lost a check that they should have had yet and they just didn't know or something.
You like to get it to the people who forget.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Sometimes I'll find a check in the bottom of my drawer for 58 bucks that I just forgot about, you know, it's, and those add up. If you have 100 of those, it adds up, that's, you know, 5,800. So those, those do add up.
Okay.
The last comment I have is on the assessors overlay. This is another reason why the free cash is a little lower. When the Department of Revenue calculates free cash, they subtract whatever's in the assessors overlay balance from your final figure. We, the assessor sent us a letter saying there was only about $6,000 in exposure, yet the liability for overlay is 173,000. So there is some income there that the town can claim. This is 2022, so you may have already done this, claimed some of this for your budget or for stabilization or something. So this, this is a comment that might be outdated at this point.
Well, I know the assessors are, are looking at that and considering reducing or.
Yeah, I don't remember that as part of the discussion for this particular budget.
Yeah, I don't think we did anything with that.
No, we didn't. But that would be good to keep an eye on for us.
That's a nice little funding source.
Tony, I appreciate all the work that went into this and all this information and, and the work that's been done to get it to this point. I mean, obviously, there's still some things that need to be done. I suspect most of your management letters have most of these items on them for most municipalities.
Yeah.
But we're now kind of at the standard.
Yeah.
As you bring up.
Yeah, these are standard comments, they appear in a lot of management letters. In fact, I cut and paste a lot of them and just changed the names to make it easier on myself because all towns have the same, same sorts of comments. Low-hanging fruit, it can be fixed, they're easy to fix. The cash variance might be more, might require an adjustment. But I don't see any reason why, you know, at the close of the year, a lot of these could be, you know, could be gone from the management letter. But, but again, it's not anything that's beyond standard still.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? I know Tony has, I think, some, something else to do this evening.
Yes, no, thanks, Tony. This is much more fun than it was a couple of years ago, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me, I'll sign off if there are no other questions.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Richard.
Thanks, thanks, Richard.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here, you're welcome to stay. Yep.
We just need to do some housekeeping.
We can, we can do that.
We'll go in the hall so these guys can.
Yeah, you guys are in a hurry, so we can, we just need to do minutes.
Oh.
It's very, you don't need to listen to our minutes.
You can certainly use the table in my office if you'd like to make yourself comfortable. You're welcome.
Thank you, nice seeing you.
Thanks. Thanks. Enjoy the rest of the summer.
I know, it's winding down.
The school's starting, it's hardly gone to school yet.
Hadley, we leave tomorrow. She goes tomorrow.
She's going to be great.
She's going to be great.
And you and Jen will survive.
Yes, we will. She's going to do great. Thanks for asking, Darrell. Okay, so we're going to try to get this back on track, Bob. I know you've been patiently waiting back there. Did you want to come up? Because if I'm reading this right, you're next. So we did take up the bonfire, but there is a request for additional ARPA funding and then also-
Well, it's actually existing ARPA funds that-
Some is, some was existing and then some-
Was authorized in '22.
Right, okay, so let me get to this here in my, sorry, I have stuff.
It's okay.
I have a lot of stuff. Do I want to go buy it? You can talk, I'll look.
So essentially, if you haven't had a chance to read the letter that I put through-
I did.
Is there was money that was appropriated through ARPA in '22, it got carried over to '23 because we still had a little bit left over for EMS expenses. I was waiting to get some quotes on some apparel due to a request from some of the membership, but also just changing of staffing. You know, we did hire some college students, they've left, they didn't necessarily return any of their uniforms, so it kind of left us short. And then because of, it took, taking a little longer to get some of the quotes, I wasn't able to expend some of the money in FY '23. So that was where the request for the $1,426.68 would be to the remainder of FY '23 to carry to '24, and then an additional $3,500 in ARPA funds to facilitate the purchases of more shirts and baseball caps or knit caps for the PREDIM staff. It was a request of some of the membership of the department to get out of t-shirts and go to polo shirts, so they, obviously, they do cost a few dollars more per shirt. I found a vendor who will do it for a little bit cheaper than what we had been getting them for. So that's essentially what it was, is to make us look more like the shirts that I wear and the full-time staff wear every day, so we all look the same. So that's essentially what that was. And the reason for the ARPA request is because the ambulance specifically only has $2,000 in the uniform and PPE line, and that currently is, I use that funds to cover the cost of the EMS coats, the high-vis stuff that are required when we're working on the highway or working on roadways. And they're also bloodborne pathogens, so that money is, is really allocated to keep using to go towards the coats. And this is a-
I just have one, one question. You know, I, we've been very strong supporters over the years of the fire department and equipment and stuff, and you have something that other organizations don't have. You have a fireman's association that raises money and they use the money for fire department or other organizations. Did you ask about the shirts for, with the fire department?
I did not broach this to the, to the fire association. They've bought some other equipment for the new mini pumper and things this year, so I didn't go back to them for the additional money. They spent $3,400 on a fan and a few other items over the last 12 months, so I didn't go back to them, and they're-
The only reason I'm bringing it up is because with the ARPA funds, my, my worries now are we have the furnace in the town hall that might need to be replaced, you have a boiler over at elementary school, they're supposed to be both looked at to see what kind of condition they are in. We also have some, figuring out something for the TV studio, and we have some other stuff. So that's the only reason I was asking if somehow for smaller cost items, the association might be willing to help with the shirts. If they're not, they're not, but I mean-
I didn't broach this subject, I had already hit them for about $4,000 or $5,000 over the last couple of months, so I didn't go back to them for this one.
And with the five and 10 project, I'm worried too with ARPA funds, because we're going to get hit again, so, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of needs, a lot of wants, but I just thought I'd have to ask that question, because the bonfire is going to be in October, and, and I know that's a good fundraiser, so.
So why isn't their uniform budget already in your budget?
We do, we have the $2,000, and that's being in the ambulance line to be used towards purchasing the high-vis coats.
So this wasn't foreseen? I mean, your budget's only in, you're only in by less than two months into the budget year, and you, this is somehow unforeseen that the guys need uniforms?
Well, part of why it wasn't put in for the FY '24 budget is because going through the budgeting process, we were in limbo and weren't sure if the ambulance was even going to still be functioning as of July 1st. So I did not include it into the budget, because we weren't sure if we were going to be operating, it was questionable for a while.
But you did get a budget to operate for the year. I get, my, I have to say, my concern is, there just seems to be a request for additional funds from the fire department on almost every agenda. Like, at some point, we just have, this has to stop, and I'm not sure that this is, you know, we've had to do the extra funding things, you know, we'll do that, but this one just, I'm not sure is a necessity. I mean, it should have been, there should have been more than a $2,000 line for the, for the uniforms, but I, I just am concerned that there's just been request after request.
I believe I only put two for, for the fire department, this is the second one I think I've put in. I did the one for the training overtime, because my budget was short from what I originally requested, I think.
There's been a lot of, but we've done a lot of ARPA funding.
Yeah, a lot of ARPA, I believe this is the fire department's second one that-
Okay. So does ambulance and fire have a clothing allowance or a clothing line item?
I have, I have one on the fire side that is for PPE, so that's where I buy the turnout gear. So the turnout gear is $3,100 per set, and I have $7,500 in the account.
Okay.
So when I buy turnout gear, I-
So the gear, like, I mean, I, you know, I see people around with the sweatshirts and the shirts like yours, who, who, doesn't the town pay for those?
So mine is part of the department budget, it's allocated part of my contract. The t-shirts that everybody's wearing was paid for out of this original allocation of ARPA funds. Anybody that buys the sweatshirt style, we call them a Reuben, they purchase those on their own, if they want to buy one.
Well, how did everybody get their uniforms before this request, and how are they going to get it after this if we approve it?
So the original purchase of the, the t-shirts was out of the, the first round of approval for ARPA funds.
But I mean, without ARPA, you guys had uniforms, is what I'm saying. I don't understand why it's not like just part of your budget to have uniforms and replacements. I see you have it for the turnout gear and the PPE for the ambulance people.
Yep.
But you don't have like a regular budget line for like uniform replacement for even next year?
No, we don't. Again, part, part of it was due to the fact that we, as we were building the budget, we weren't sure what the status of the ambulance going into FY '24 was. So I did not include any extra, because we weren't sure if the ambulance was going to be functioning. It does not have to be approved, it was something that was just brought up.
We knew that regardless of what happened, it wasn't happening this year. I mean, we moved for, I was under the impression we moved forward with your budget for your department to function the way that it should function.
It was, but we submit a budget in December, and if the override had not passed, we would not have had an ambulance for the new fiscal year. That was, that was a big piece of it, is that if the override had failed, we would not have had a functioning ambulance.
But you, you still would have built a budget.
So building the budget is going one direction, and then if the service isn't there, there's nothing to, you don't have anybody, you don't have a function. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be, it was, it was brought forward as to, to upgrade, but I can wait until after October and go to the association.
I am concerned about the ARPA funds. I don't, I guess I'm hesitant on spending those with all the foreseeable potential problems that we're going to have, honestly.
And that's fine, I always say, you know, we don't, we don't know the other costs when I submit these that are potential issues for the town.
So you'd be able to get them t-shirts, the, the standard that they've been wearing?
Yeah, right now, I'd probably be able to buy, you know, a dozen or so shirts.
Don't you have $1,400 left?
Nope, because that was, it was only, the, your original vote was only to carry it to FY '23, not to continue it until it was expended.
Right, okay, so-
It was given in '22, and then he was authorized to carry it over to '20 for '23.
Okay.
Right.
And it wasn't spent in that year?
Yeah, I was dealing with trying to get quotes and nobody would get back to me and-
For shirts?
For shirts, yeah. So I ended up not getting them until after July 1st.
I guess I would like to hold off on this, I'm just a little concerned about using ARPA funds.
I'm very concerned on ARPA funds with stuff coming up.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if, if for any reason, after the bonfire, the association said they can't help, then maybe come back.
Yeah, I can certainly broach the subject with them after the, after the event.
Okay.
So this carryover, is that, that's already gone from there?
So, so the $1,426, though, you still like authorization to use that in the current fiscal year, right?
Ideally, that would, that would help.
So, right, because if, that was, and that was kind of what I was trying to ask, so-
But that's unspent.
Because this total, totally, you're asking for about $5,000 for new polo shirts.
And hats, yes.
Polo shirts and hats.
Correct.
That just, first of all, that seems pretty steep, but also, you know, I'm just not sure that we, we should be doing that. The 14, that's why I asked about this 1,400. You could get t-shirts with that.
Correct.
To replace the ones that people who left kept, which is fine, nobody should have to wear someone else's t-shirt. So, I mean, I-
If that money is there and it was originally appropriated by the fire department, I actually don't have a problem with-
That I'm fine with, the 1,400, and get new t-shirts, they should have something to wear.
I'd be okay with carrying that over.
Yeah, I would be okay with carrying that over, so that you can outfit them so that they're appropriately identified as, you know, but then maybe just not go to polo shirts for it.
So I guess I can make a motion to approve the ARPA funds in the amount of $1,426.68 to be carried over to FY '24 from FY '23, right? Okay.
I would just add, for the purpose of buying t-shirts and hats.
Okay.
Uniforms.
I'll second that.
A motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
No, so we'll, hopefully a good compromise there.
That works.
But thanks for bringing it to our attention. And then the revolving fund. You wanted to discuss setting up a revolving fund, which makes perfect sense to me, I guess. I mean, you're doing these various, I'll let you explain it to townspeople.
This kind of came about, obviously, the, the police department, they do details, and it's the revolving fund, I think everybody's aware of it. In the last couple of years, we've been asked to provide EMS coverage for different events that are going on in town, the wheel bike for food, the competitive edge race that happens, and a few other things that go on in town, the marathon up at, or the road race at Black Birch. And, so those are all private events, and ultimately, we've been sending an EMT up there for the last few years, most of these are a single-person standby, and essentially, it ends up being that our budget covers the cost, because the fire department has no way to recoup those monies. We can build, build an entity that's running the event, but we don't have any revenue accounts for it to go into for certain, certain events, so it ends up going into the general fund, which then, yes, potentially comes back, you know, a year later or so forth, a little less on the ambulance side. So this came to be is that because we've been being asked for more events, and I ran into an issue last year with one of the races in town, so I foresee that we may be providing the EMS coverage for that event going forward, they, they can pay us, but the residents shouldn't be on the hook for having to pay any of those fees, so this is-
Or your department, your line.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Or our budget covering those costs. So this was a way to, very similar to the police, they invoice it, we collect the money, and then we, we pay them their rate. And it would be a detail rate, it'll be less, it'll be less ultimately than the current police rate, just because there's other pieces that are involved in there. And I've started getting some pricing from a couple of other agencies to see what they're, what they're charging per hour, if there's a certain fee. So it'll, it'll cover all of its own costs, and then the town still gets the 10% admin fee, no matter what the invoice ends up being.
Right, and it just seems like it-
I met with the accountant last week to talk to him about it, so.
Yeah, I thought originally needed a town vote, it sounds like because it's a, the way that the account is, they can essentially-
So would you be hopping on the police detail one?
They, Richard, actually, the town accountant, he felt that it was better to have our own, so we can both kind of manage our funds, we're not sure what money's going in.
Yeah.
Which is fine, I-
That's probably, yeah, I think it's, and so we just have to set that up. I, I think it's a great idea, there's no reason why the line, your line should be paying for private details, just very much like the police line.
Right, I agree.
So I have no problem with it whatsoever. I'm just kind of surprised, well, you're saying you're experiencing it more than you used to, yeah.
Yes, I don't think we ever had it, I mean, you know, Greg was manager for a while, and we, we didn't really do that many, you know, maybe one a year for a couple of hours, but now it's becoming probably six, maybe eight times a year, four to eight hours, depending on the event. So it's just becoming more, more money that's going to ultimately come from our budgets for something that's a private event.
Yeah, we just have to track that the money is coming in.
Correct, that was the one piece that Richard said, is that, you know, we, we could pay it, pay the folks upfront, and then wait for the money to come back, it's, it's a double-edged sword, because if they end up not paying-
Then you're on the hook for it.
The town is going to be on the hook for it, so it's going to end up having to come from free cash or whatever.
Well, then you don't cover the event next year.
Right, yeah.
Right, I mean-
That's easy.
We just wait, and our employees are going to have to understand that, you know, you won't get your pay until we get the money back from them.
Well, it should operate however the police one does.
Yeah, they shouldn't have to wait.
They shouldn't have to wait, that's not right.
I mean, I don't foresee anybody ever not paying.
I mean, everyone you've listed, I think are entities that would pay in a timely manner, so I'm, let's-
I don't want the town on a liability, but I don't feel that anything that we're going to go and work for, I don't think anybody's not going to pay the bill.
I, I can't imagine, yeah. So, and if, if that happens, we'll deal with that when that happens, but, so I'm, I'm all for setting this up, is there, there doesn't need to be a vote to do it?
Richard seemed to say that there was no local vote or town meeting vote required.
Right, that's correct. We just wanted to make, be transparent, make sure the, the select board is, is okay with this.
And residents know, and-
Just, just to acknowledge that that was the intent, to set up an account.
And it's going to be-
A revenue and expense.
And it's fire and EMS, I know, I think the paperwork says fire officer, we don't want to, it's fire and EMS details.
Right, right.
Because we have also been asked to go out and do a fire standby, if somebody's putting in a new fire suppression system, they need somebody to do a pump test while they're doing everything. Again, the town shouldn't have to be, we shouldn't be eating the cost of that, that's on them. So it's kind of an all-encompassing, that if it's an anything private entity that's hiring us.
And, okay, so we don't have, we don't vote to set those rates or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
I don't believe they, they set the rate, right?
Well, don't we set the police revolving rate?
I could bring them forward once I finalize it, I was working on that today, just because there's, there's a couple of options.
Well, the select board in the past has voted the police detail rate.
Yeah, we do vote the police rate.
So, yeah, I, I think, yeah, just when you know what that's going to be-
I have to create them, and then you guys have to prove to them.
Just good practice, yes, as, I think that would be a good practice.
Because it's for payroll purposes.
Right, and, and just for transparency, so residents understand everything that's going on, okay.
Yeah, that's not a problem. I'm pretty sure I'll be back in your next meeting, because I'll have ambulance abatement, so I can just present them to you at that meeting.
Gotcha, okay. I don't have any more questions about it, I think that seems pretty straightforward.
I just request two minutes.
Yes. Oh, a break. I thought you meant two minutes of Bob's time.
That's what I thought, yeah.
We're going to take a break, we'll be back. Okay, we are back after just a short break, and we just have, it looks like a few more, oh, no, quite a bit, quite a bit, to get through. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're going to backtrack here to topic four, which is the DPW report, and Brandon, are you here for that?
Like I said, it's not, I'm not here for the report, it was just the, the rate increase that Phil proposed.
Yep, okay, and that's really the only DPW issue on here, because obviously, we-
He didn't mention anything else to be talked about.
Yeah, obviously, we talked about the larger project already. I personally don't have a problem with this. I think that, you know, we've set some precedent with some other people with specialized licenses and qualifications in town, because these, these are positions that we need to hold on to when we have good employees. So I, I don't have a problem with, this is a, there's, in front of us, a proposed wage increase for Brandon and as our assistant water superintendent, and I had a chance to meet with Brandon some lately, and, you know, really got an appreciation for your qualifications and your professionalism, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
But, you know, whatever you guys want to talk about.
Well, I, I do have some concerns. I had, I'm not looking at this from, I, I know you're a great employee, and you do fantastic, but from my side of the house, I look at the position and the responsibilities. So I originally asked Phil for information on what job description was, and in order for me to say, okay, this job constitutes a 13% increase, what additional responsibilities have increased for this particular job? And the only thing in this packet that I'm seeing is job comparisons to a superintendent's position, and your present position is like an assistant. So that's where I'm having trouble saying, okay, 10 grand more. What does the town get out of it? How has the jobs changed? Is this, are we asking, is Phil asking, are you asking for two superintendent positions when we only have one? So that's where my head is, and that's where I'm having a little trouble, because I don't know if... I, I mean, I see increasing employees based on responsibilities. We brought people up, but this is sort of, to me, a, a large ask. So I, I think I have to get in my head these questions resolved before I can move forward with saying, yeah, that's, that makes sense.
I guess I would just follow up. As I said, there, there has been precedent, particularly with people who have specialized licenses within the DPW, operating the various plants, the water plant, or the sewer plant, because it's not, for me, an issue necessarily that there has to be a change in duties to do this. It's a realization that people who are working for Hatfield, and not just in this position, and a variety of positions, are significantly, are paid significantly less than other communities. And we know that we can lose these licensed and credentialed employees to other neighboring towns who are offering much more money. We've made changes to salaries at the sewer plant. We've made changes to salaries in the highway department. We've made changes to salaries in the fire department. We are constantly trying to make sure that we're getting to a point of being more competitive and retaining the good employees that we have. And to me, this is about retaining a good employee. We would not want to be in a position of having to fill this position, because frankly, the candidates aren't out there.
Well, on the, on the other hand, when we did do other employees, we had a comparative of other communities for that position, of what those positions are. Right now, in my packet, I don't have a comparative for compared to other towns. I only have a comparative to a position that's higher from, from other towns. So that's why I'm saying, I don't know what the job pays. I don't mind paying if, if it's an average, and I do want to keep a good employee, but in the past, like with the water treatment, we were told that if the person doesn't get a raise, they're going to leave, and that person ended up leaving anyway. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know if, I just, you know, 13% increase without any more information, for me, I just, I just can't honestly do it. I apologize for that. I know you're an outstanding employee. I've heard nothing but good about you, but I'm not looking at, I have to look at it from positions. And if I had some more information on your present position, job responsibilities, what it pays compared to others, then I could probably have a better, make a better decision. But with having information of a higher position, I just, that's just me. But I mean, my colleague, that's why there's three of us. So if my colleagues disagree, then so be it.
I don't like to disagree with you, Ed, but it does happen occasionally, I guess. Greg, do you have any thoughts or questions?
I, I agree on a lot of what Ed said, and I believe that there's, this is a really, really big raise. I, I know we're trying to adjust to be comparative to other people or other communities. I, I don't know what the other communities are being, are comparatively, because I don't have that information either. But, uh...
I would be happy to review this if we could get some further information on it.
And I don't want to speak on behalf of Phil, because obviously, he's not here. I don't know if you had something special set aside.
I mean, if, I, I mean, I would like is your, your present job responsibilities for your position, and how that job position compares with people in the same position in other communities.
Yep.
And then I'd be, I'd be allowed to re-entertain this, which I, you know, I mean, based on that.
Right. Okay.
That, but that's me, I mean.
Well, I, I agree. I, I don't want you to leave by any means. I like you staying.
I don't want to leave.
I like you being here, yeah. I hear great things about you, but I also have to answer to the townspeople as to where I came up with this. I just can't say, oh, they sent me, they gave me a nice piece of paper, so I gave the guy an extra $10,000 a year.
No, no.
Which is, which is way cool.
I understand.
Well, and the other, the other ones we adjusted, it was one community. It wasn't like a full survey of all, a bunch of different towns, right?
I can tell you the, the two that were attached in the packet were both very accepting of just my, one, my credentials, two, my years of experience, where I would have had a, it would have not been a lateral slide over that. It would have been an increase to take that actual superintendent's position.
Oh, that's what I was just going to ask. It was for the superintendent.
It was going to be very little discrepancy, and I actually withdrew Southampton, depending on what we were going to hear from this, and, because then, once I talked to Phil. So I'm not actively looking for them. I don't know if they filled that position yet, but that would have been pretty much an open door if I wanted it.
For the water superintendent.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
So, I mean, like I said, I don't want to leave here. I've been here 11 years full-time. I know this infrastructure. I know the town inside and out, and I love it here.
I mean, that's, that's great. I mean, I, I hate to lose you too, but at the same token, if somebody comes in and said, well, um, if, if I don't get this raise, I'm leaving, that's, you know, how can I say to the, the townspeople, yeah, I mean, we're, you know what I'm saying?
I think, I, I do think, I, I get what you're saying, but for particular, for particular positions that require particular training and credentials that we know are difficult to find, it's, it's, to me, there's a greater sense of urgency.
Then, then that should mean we should be able to get that information very easily.
Brandon, do you, I know you, you hold the licenses that are required. Do you hold other licenses that are above?
Above that, I mean, OSHA 10, OSHA 30. I don't need my CDL anymore. I don't need my horseshoes anymore. I still have those. Backflow license, everything else. So essentially, if Tony steps away or is out or absent, I am fully licensed to take over the water plant as is.
Okay.
And there does not need to be any stand-in person involved in the middle of this.
That's good to know.
And as far as our duties, I mean, we're alternating every other two weeks, every pay period, basically. So we handle weekends opposite of each other. So if he's not there, it's, it's really not like a big loss. You know, I'm not saying a loss, but it's completely covered legally. DEP, EPA recognizes that.
Yeah.
So, we're, I mean, basically, we're almost at, we're almost doing the same thing currently.
Right. So in his absence, you would pretty much...
Yeah. There would be, there'd be really no transition of power. There'd be no, anything else.
Who operates the plant.
Pretty much going to run as it is currently. So...
So I guess like his salary also might be a part of my consideration, too.
That's totally up to you guys and Phil.
Oh, no, I know. I'm just saying, I, well, I...
I think, Brandon, it would be helpful, though, if, if, you know, we have a job description.
Yep. Yep. And like, I wasn't sure exactly what...
If the board has a job description.
Phil presented you guys already or didn't, so, like I said, I don't want to speak on his behalf.
I have a feeling that the fact-finding will probably show that the new salary request is competitive. So...
I, I believe it will too, but I want to have it before I go and do it. I don't want to, I don't want to just do it blindly.
Totally understand. If I knew that, ahead of time, I would actually ask.
You know, my office will go ahead and, and reach out to other communities to get that information.
Okay.
And I don't think that's a hard request. I think it's, it's good to have that, because now we can show the town that the reason we increased...
100%.
Because they're, it's the town people that pay the bills, so we got to be able to go to them and say, this is why you're paying a little bit more. That's all.
And then just making sure, it sounds like it's in the budget.
Yeah, Phil did reiterate that to me, that there would absolutely be no change.
So there's no additional request to the line. It's just, okay. Okay, that information would be great.
Yeah. Thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brandon, for everything.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay. Marlene, we're finally getting to you.
Oh, do I have items?
You have a lot of items.
Yeah, they're, they're quick.
But some of them are pretty quick.
They're quick. Right.
You pretty much have your own page.
Two requests. One from, from the DPW director and from the wastewater superintendent to carry over vacation time.
I want to speak on these two.
Me too. I have some thoughts.
I got some, I got some concerns.
I got some thoughts.
Now, in the past, we have done carryovers based on different situations. Like the fire chief, he, he didn't have staff. He was doing water calls. We didn't have a problem with that.
COVID created some problems.
Right. Last couple of years, we've been telling our department heads, make sure you take your vacation. We don't want these big payouts at the end of the year. And with Phil, he's got two backups. He's got Tony, and he's got Garrett. So if he takes time off, there's somebody there that can fill his shoes for a short time. So this request from Phil not only asks for 110 hours to be carried, it doesn't even give an explanation if he's planning on use it by 2024. So that sort of bothers me. Whereas the other request, I can understand, because he's been on his own, and he's finally got some help. So he, I can, I can understand that one.
So Ed and I are back to agreeing with each other, so this is a good place to be. Because I do have a problem with this 110-hour carryover. That's a lot of time to carry over. I don't think that the reasons listed for why he's asking are really that compelling. There is no reason why those things should have held up taking that much vacation time. So I, and we, I think, I think that Phil was one person we had said, please use your time. Don't ask us again.
More than once.
And so I am, I am, I do have a problem with Phil's, but I would agree with you that for Kenny, you know, he didn't have much, it's, first of all, it's a more reasonable request to carry, slightly more reasonable. But there's a good reason why he wasn't able to take the time.
Yeah, because he didn't have...
He should be in a position to now, because...
And he should be in a position to now.
Because Eric Meals is helping out there, too.
Yeah. And, you know, with any vacation request, including Kenny's, I would always like to see a date by which... Like, I think Bob's provided that with us. When he's given a, a request, he'll say, I plan to use it by such and such a date. So, I mean, neither of these have that, but I am in favor of granting Kenny's tonight. I am not in favor of granting that. I mean, maybe we can have Phil request a smaller amount or something, but I, I don't see a reason why, I, I would agree with you, why Phil's asking for a carryover at all, and for, certainly for that large. I'm sorry, did you want to?
And I would like a deadline on this, too. I want to see an end to this.
For Phil's?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to carry, allow Kenny's to go through. And that was, I'll make a motion to allow carry of 80 hours, because he does also indicate he plans on using it by the end of 2024.
Wait a second. So this is 90 in addition to 80?
And requesting to carry over 90 hours of vacation along with 80 hours from, so he already, he, so the... Yeah.
Yeah, so he can, you can always carry, you can always carry two over, no?
You can carry over up to the two weeks, yeah.
An additional two and a half? So that's a lot. But he does say that he will use them by the end of '24, fiscal '24.
But he's going to continue to accrue vacations. So he's already carrying over the two weeks. That's a lot.
Right, I understand that. It is a lot.
And then he'll continue to accrue, so he'll need...
So can I, can I amend your motion to say that...
I withdraw my motion.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I just want to add to it that this would be the last carryover allowed. That, in other words, at the end of fiscal '24, I would not entertain another carryover. So take what you can, and then, you know, you've got a full year practically now to sort of split that up so that it can be taken in a, in a way that works for both him and for the department.
And I agree with that. Make sure all department heads are notified of that.
In other words, I don't want to keep entertaining these carryovers from year to year.
Correct.
So Kenny had a good reason to have this accrual this year, because of the situation at the plant and the staffing situations. But have a plan for using it, and have a plan for not requesting any more carryover next year.
So your amendment that, on Ed's motion, that this be the last carryover, that's in general, that encompasses all employees, just Kenny's?
I would say for just Kenny's. I mean, that's what we're working on tonight.
I wasn't sure, and then Ed...
So that Kenny gets a specific directive, that we want him to be able to use this time, but please make his best effort to use it within this year, because we would not entertain anything other than a typical allowable by
Sure.
contract or personnel policy carryover. Unless there's additional extenuating circumstances.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
And then Phil should either speak to us about this and talk about it, amend it, something, but that's, yeah.
I'd agree with it.
Okay. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. Greg, it's getting late. Okay.
The next item is the employment agreement renewal for the treasure collector, and actually...
Did you already do this?
You, you did, and you accepted the proposed changes, but the board has not voted the employment agreement and signed it.
Okay. So this is just a formality of...
Yes, it had been sent to Patty and just was waiting for her to, to send it back.
And she has, I see she has...
Yeah. So she did ask me to inquire with the board about comp time. So previously, her, her first agreement, she was authorized, and actually, there's language in here, to use, take comp time, but, you know, use it for her, I think, within six months. And she hasn't been able to really use all that comp time, but she will be using it as part of her, her leave of absence.
Oh, so then what's the question?
That she carried over beyond June 30th.
She can use that. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
It's, you know, yeah.
Because we are, we already had our, we already agreed to this.
Yeah.
You did. It was just the, the comp time.
And it's going to be used, so as long as it's going to be used.
It will be used. Yes. Oh, yes.
Yeah. Okay. I'm fine with that. And it's already in here anyway, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't need to make a motion. We just need to sign? Or do we actually need to vote it?
Vote the agreement.
Okay. I'll take a motion then.
The contract agreement.
Make a motion that we accept the contract between the town of Hatfield and Patricia Cotton. For...
Actually, this was... Yeah, actually, this should be retro to July 1st.
Starting July 1st.
Right.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
Greg? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval of human resource policy manual?
Just also one other support services agreement.
Oh, yes.
With Strategic Municipal Services. We know the treasure collector is out, and I have been looking into hiring temporary support services. We do need a treasure collector to lead in that office. And currently, I'm estimating through the end of this calendar year.
Okay.
Strategic Municipal Services have a retired treasure collector that's available to work 16 hours per week. I prefer if it was more than 16 hours a week, but that's all they can do right now.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that.
This is an hourly rate of $95 per hour. I have some money in my, my budget, the town administrator's budget for professional services, but that will get eaten up pretty quickly.
Okay.
So I...
I mean, we have no choice but to do this, so...
So, you know, it would be a conversation I'd, I'd have with the finance committee and about transferring money from reserve to cover that cost.
We should probably do that sooner rather than later. And do you, I don't have a contract in here to sign.
For strategic, oh, it's the original... For strategic, oh, it's, the original's not in there?
No.
Okay. Well, here, let me give you.
We can vote it.
This one from my packet.
I have one in the packet, but it's just a copy.
I can go ahead and sign it.
Oh, you sign it?
The board agrees, I haven't signed it, I can, but if.
I'm fine with it, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Greg?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Just wanted to make sure the board was comfortable with hiring.
So do you want us to make a motion to actually take a vote? So we need to, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with Strategic Municipal Services for an interim treasurer's services while necessary.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion made and second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human resource manual?
Yes, so we, the board had completed reviewing this in last year and then there, this current year, there's been some changes. And you had an opportunity to take a look at it. It was really adding the DPW policies, a closing allowance, and then the minimum four-hour call-out.
Right.
And, and when I looked back, pre, when the board finished completing review of the HR policy last year, there was never a vote to accept it.
Okay.
I do want to ask the board, though, if you go to page 15, this classification plan has been part of this HR policy for a very long time. We don't use it. I think because we, we just weren't in a position to, to use it.
So should we?
Efforts have certainly been made to bring.
If we omit that, does it alter any other parts of the agreement? In other words, these grades aren't referred to through?
They're not referred to anywhere else.
So we could just approve it, but omit 10.6?
Correct.
I would be fine with that.
Just bookkeeping, yeah.
Do you, Ed, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I know, this, this started when I first got on the board, this started doing a piece at a time.
It took quite a while.
Time ago.
Took quite a while to go through it in town council.
It's actually kind of a big deal tonight, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it, so I will make a motion that we approve the human resource policy manual, but omit section 10.6, classification plan.
Second.
A motion made and second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the board needs to revoke Heritage Tavern's liquor license. Karen has, has made several attempts to, to reach them and they still haven't responded. So as you know, Heritage Tavern, they just closed up, they didn't even notify the town. So it's unfortunate that.
It really is.
Yeah. So there really needs to be a record that the select board has revoked that license. I mean, they can't use it anywhere else, anyway.
Okay, I'll make a motion to revoke the Heritage Tavern liquor license.
Second.
Motion made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just an update on DePond, as you know, the town submitted an application to the community preservation committee and they funded to do an analysis of, of the, of the water. And a few weeks ago, TRC, TCR was out there to do the sediment collections. They're currently putting together the report. They were very grateful for Phil's help, he assisted them that day out there on site. And so they were there for a few hours. As I said, they're working on the report and I should have that report by August 31st.
Nice.
Great.
Great.
Thanks.
We received notification from the U.S. Treasury, they've implemented new uses for, for the authorization or for ARPA funds, actually, if you're going to consider those uses, the board would have to authorize it as, as we do the other, the other types of uses.
So these are, I thought it was open, is this restricting it to these uses?
No, it's, they've added, they've implemented some new uses, which is for emergency relief from natural disasters. And I, I believe that's because of all the natural disasters that are occurring throughout the country. Surface transportation projects and Title I projects.
And I see community development.
Yes.
Where, I don't see.
That's under Title I.
That's under Title I.
Title I projects.
So that's just in addition, I, I wasn't sure if it was restrictive.
In addition to the current uses.
Okay.
So just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And this is a summary of the ARPA spending?
Yes, the balance is $374,796.
Okay.
You'll recall that GNS Industrial had expressed interest, they came before the board to transfer their license to Harrison Diesel Solutions. And GNS came in and Mr. Savard, right, Savard. And apparently, I don't quite understand it, but one of the manufacturing companies that he works with would like the, the person that's going to be taking over the business receive more training before the license is transferred. So the select board needs to rescind that vote of July 11th, 2023. And is Mr. Savard going to apply again? He'll have to get a license.
Well, because. Well, if we're rescinding, we, didn't we give the license to him?
Transfer it, or, you know, became, the license was issued to Drew Harrison.
Further on, you'd have to vote to reinstate.
So is Mr. Savard going to continue to operate?
Yes.
So he needs a new license.
If you can vote to reinstate his license that he had before.
Well, that license was good for the year, but the board, so, yeah, if you're voting to rescind it.
Did he do all the paperwork to renew?
No.
Oh, we can't renew it if he didn't do that. I mean, we can rescind, so right now, there'd be no license there.
Right, that's the way I'm looking at it.
That's how I look at it, if we rescind our vote to, to license Harrison, then there's no license. And if Gary hasn't done what he needs to do to, what he would have had to do if he was just doing a normal yearly renewal, then there's no license.
Then maybe what we could do is have the board take it up at the next meeting?
Yes.
That's the best thing, yeah.
Yeah, have Gary get his paperwork in so that there's no hiccup in the licensing.
Perfect.
Okay. And asking the recommendation here for the board to declare property for, for disposal. There's a number of items upstairs that just, some of it's very old furniture. Some of the furniture upstairs came from either the high school or the elementary school and the historical society was using the lab tables and they have no interest in, in those tables. And I believe the folding tables as well, those were used by the historical society.
And nobody needs the blueprint cabinets? I'm surprised.
Well.
Or are they just not in good shape?
As far as we know, that belonged to the building inspector, but he does not, he says he doesn't need it. Right. Well, the cabinet he doesn't want, but the files, he needs to determine whether he needs to keep them or he can dispose.
You mean the contents? Well, that's a different discussion.
The files that are in there, there's.
Yeah, that's a different discussion, but, okay.
They may be, so we're just talking about the cabinet. Yes.
I mean, didn't we in the past put this out and we'd get, people would buy stuff?
Yeah, we can put it on Minnesota bid.
Okay.
We'll put it out and see what we get for bids.
I mean, these are not really necessarily high-ticket items, but.
Yeah, there's not a lot of value there.
So that's what happens if we approve, you'll put it to surplus property, you'll just go to, you'll take care of it.
Yeah, so, so what we do is, when, when there's town property, we'll ask departments if they're interested. Can they use it for their operations? If there isn't any interest, then we prepare the list for the select board to declare a surplus.
So it goes on to what?
It's called Minnesota bid. We used to do an auction here at town.
It was more local.
Yes.
Local people were buying things.
And we could do that and then we could put it on Minnesota bid if we don't have anybody, any takers for these items. So, yeah, I, I would suggest that we put it out there, folks in town, if they're interested in any of the property.
Give a little bid on it or something?
So as you know, the vehicles, there were three or four vehicles that we just put on Minnesota bid for and we sold all four of them, right? Yeah.
I mean, vehicle's a little different, but.
We brought in several thousand dollars, well, more than several, but.
Okay.
Yeah, the.
Whatever's really, I mean, I don't want to create a bunch of extra work so that, you know, we can put things like old chalkboards and stuff out, but.
People would be responsible for picking it up.
Townspeople were, were buying this stuff before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to clear all the items on this list surplus.
I'll second.
Appropriate motion? Or do I have to name all the items on this list?
No, you don't have to do that, no, just as, as presented.
A motion made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Oh, my goodness.
Okay. So that completes all the items.
And so then just down on topic seven?
Topic seven, so the town has received the EMS Fire Services Assessment Study from MRI. We haven't had a meeting since, I don't think we've had a meeting since receiving this, or maybe we have. So this is, has become a, is a public document, it's in final form.
Right.
And we are set to have a public presentation on September 27th at the elementary school.
Will people, will we be able to make this available so that people can see it ahead of time?
I was going to put it on the town's website.
On the website and maybe even a social media post, even if it just directs people to the website?
Can we get that on Facebook?
It'd be difficult to post all of that on Facebook.
Yeah, you can't put it all on Facebook, but just letting people know the report is here because people should be able to read it ahead of time, it's too big. You know, it's too big for people to just be seeing it for the first time that night.
Yeah.
Marlene, in the file, these two pay rate, we just sign them, we don't vote them, right?
For the fire department?
One's for the fire department and one is for the town administrator.
Town administrator.
Ashton.
Oh, for the administrative assistant.
Administrative assistant.
Yes, well, for Ashton, you do vote.
We vote, but for Bob's.
For fire department, you don't need to vote, you can just sign those.
Okay. This is just a new per diem that Bob has, so we'll sign this one.
Can I ask a question? Do we know what time on September 27th yet?
6:30.
6:30? But I would like, you know, I think it'd be great for people to have time to.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
And, and then one last item is the second floor, town hall second floor. We have been talking about, you know, use of the upstairs. And we also had been looking at the load capacity. Social review. The engineer we're working with, he just cannot make the time for, for this study. And all we want to know is, you know, if we're to use that for storage space, can the, can, can the current structure handle filing cabinets?
We know that the current balcony is not at proper load capacity.
Correct.
So the question was, can the engineer give us a rafter layout of what would have to be done in order to bring it to capacity that's required by the code?
Right.
Can we find another engineer?
So that's what we're doing.
Okay.
That's what we're doing, and I wanted to just let the, the board know that we are looking at another engineer and made it very clear that this can't wait another year.
You know, I know you could get a contractor in town that would come in and probably do a great job, but you need a stamp nowadays, so.
We're talking about leveling the floor up there as well. And then, you know, like to have a, the board to have a conversation about the improvements of electrical up there. Although, Ed, you said that that, where the stove was.
Phil, Phil had.
Tim Pachorek.
Pachorek come in. Because right now, upstairs is at the, the old, where the electric stove was, there was like a five-circuit panel.
Panel there.
And Pachorek feels that the existing panel would be enough of power for what's needed up there. So we would save on some expense, we just have to extend from that panel to whatever we decide that's going up there, which we still need to have a discussion on what we're going to do up there, if we're going to do anything up there.
Mini splits.
Or let it collect dust.
Right, so we're talking about mini splits and a studio for, for cable.
We were talking.
Cable TV.
A lot of different options of where, I mean, right now, in the small room, you can very easily shut two doors and you could put, if, if the board wanted to, you could put the cable TV right in there for now, do nothing, and at a later date, actually divide the room up if you wanted to. But that would secure all the equipment. And without putting anything in there, the only thing that would be required would be some electrical. So that would be a big savings and you just have to put the splits in. Because otherwise, if you go downstairs, there's two rooms, the two rooms downstairs would require a lot of work to be done to actually bring it up to a decent studio and the other places behind here, but you have a balcony, you have two air handlers and in order to build something in here, that would be another expense. So right now, one cheap and easy, quick way in my mind, not saying I'm right, would if you use the small room, do nothing in it, close it off with the two doors, John could use that space and if we decided to.
It also puts the studio up in, up on that floor where potentially there could be other meetings and stuff. That's a whole nother discussion.
That's a whole nother discussion down the road. But the room's been, it's been all renovated, the floors are gorgeous up there, the, there's a bathroom now, there's an elevator, so. And there's always like, in this room tonight, look at all the room that's, that's used up. If we had 20 people in here, it's just crowded.
Does need to be cleaned up there, all that dust still from the construction.
Larger meetings and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, and the windows need to be.
Anyways, but I'd like to see maybe our next meeting have a discussion on John, where are we going to put John?
He's just been over there patiently waiting for years.
And he hasn't complained, but he.
Just over there doing his job.
He'd like to have a space where he can actually put all his equipment. You still have, under the cable TV contract that was approved, you still have to move a system from the high school down here, that has to be terminated. I mean, he's still got equipment up there, he hasn't moved because he's got a closet with no room to put it in, so I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm just hoping maybe next meeting, let's have, let's finally have a discussion on what we're going to do or what we'd like to do or what we can do or what we're not going to do at all. How's that sound?
That's the one we usually have. So we do have to take a motion or make a, take a vote on.
The new administrative assistant.
We have a new administrative assistant after Gerard left, so we, we do need to take a vote to hire and set Ashton Weagle's salary, right?
I'll make a motion that we hire and accept Ashton Weagle's.
Second.
Motion made and second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 When is he starting?
He did start.
Oh, he did start, great, okay, I'll make sure I come down this week and meet him. Is that it, Marlene?
That's all I have. Yeah, that's it.
Karen, thank you. Bob, thank you. John, thank you. Marlene, of course.
Thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.